Where's Brent?
I don't know where Brent went.
He'll be here in a minute.
He'll be here in just a minute.
Do you have a thumbs up from Ken gave you the thumbs up?
Yeah, Ken gave me the thumbs up, so. Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Nichols?
Here.
Here. Thank you if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and after which, if you would remain standing for a moment of silence, will be observed in place of an invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will move to the agenda item number three as a consent agenda.
You have a notice.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. If you're here for agenda items seven, eight, or nine, they have been pulled from the agenda. They will come back in front of the city council, I believe, on September 21st. And so if you're here for those agenda items, they've been pulled from the agenda tonight. We will move to agenda item three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Budget meetings of May 25, June 12, June 13, and June 14, 2023; clarification in regular city council meetings of July 20, 2023; and special city council meeting of August 3, 2023. B, material claims. Council may wish to waive the oral... may wish to approve the material claims for the period of August 1 through 15, 2023. C, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for June 2023 showing cash and investments as of June 30, 2023. D, animal shelter advisory board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Cassandra Cole to serve as a member of the animal shelter advisory board, filling a vacancy. Cassandra's term will begin August 18, 2023, and will expire August 18, 2025. E, human relations advisory committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Edwards Camer to continue serving as a member of the human relations advisory committee. Edwards' term will begin August 8, 2023, and will expire August 8, 2027. F, open container waiver request historic downtown Pocatello. Council may wish to consider a request from historic downtown Pocatello for a waiver of an open container ordinance to allow alcohol to be consumed in the 100 block of South Garfield Avenue and inside Lookout Point for Gate City Brew Fest II on August 19, 2023, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. If the open container ordinance is waived, it should be and can be contingent upon the applicant meeting the police department's requirements and purchasing appropriate permits. G, the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, Pocatello Police Department. Council may wish to approve a request regarding the 2023 Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. This is an annual allocation administered by the Bennett County. By Bennett County, there is no matching funds if awarded. Police department staff will use grant funds in the amount of $23,193 toward the purchase of Vesta 911 command post. Total purchase cost is $25,640.62. The police department has been allocated $23,193. The remaining balance is available in the police department equipment budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President, Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, before I move to approve this agenda item, I'd like to congratulate our fleet purchasing people for being able to find vehicles in the local community instead of all those bids we've been doing and buying from other places across the state. It's nice to see local vendors have a chance to bid and get some of these things. But I would move for approval of agenda item number three, the consent agenda items A through G as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mingham. He got you that time, but we'll...
You'll always say that.
I'm sure you'll always say that. Maybe he's just louder than you are.
That's it.
We have a motion. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, we have the proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight, so we'll move to agenda item five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. September 7 is 5:30 p.m., a clarification meeting. 6:00 p.m. will be a regular council meeting. September 14, 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session. Other events: August 19, annual Portnife River cleanup from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Bring work gloves and other tools to help clean the river of trash and debris. Contact Science and Environment Division for more information. August 20, last day of the season for Ross Park Aquatic Center. August 21, Welcome Back Orange and Black event for Idaho State University students that will be held at Lookout Point in historic downtown. September 4, city offices will be closed for Labor Day. However, garbage and yard waste and recycle pickups will continue on schedule. As a reminder, open burn ban in wild and urban interface areas continues. And as a reminder, schools are starting soon, so please remember to slow down in school zones. We'll move to agenda item six is a childcare license denial appeal, Julia Morgan. Julia Morgan will be present to appeal the denial of her childcare employment license renewal. Julia?
So I'm Julia Morgan, and I have been an employee at the daycare for the past year. And my license was denied when I tried to get it renewed for a suicide attempt back in 2018 when I was 18 years old. So I want to start by saying I have two jobs besides the one at the daycare. I also work at McDonald's, and I've had that job for five years since after that event. And I was promoted after less than a year to a manager. And at the daycare as well, I was promoted after less than a year and offered the position of a lead teacher, which of course I cannot get without my license. And so things that have changed since that event are that I have held down my jobs for years, and I now know where to seek help if something like that were ever to happen again. I attend therapy. I see a doctor consistently for my mental health. And that's probably the biggest change is that now I'm aware that there is like help for situations like that. And I think that I have proven that there is no risk in me having my license as I have already had it and been working. And I also have letters from my counselor, my provider, my bosses for both my jobs, the head of the store and the head of the daycare, as well as I have surveys from the parents, from all the parents in the class I worked in, and they got a chance to rate me throughout different things. And all of them rated me on the highest end for providing a safe environment for their children. And then, so yeah, and then I have letters from all of them. I don't know if you want to be to read those.
I don't think you necessarily need to read those. Any questions we might have for Julia? Linda?
Yeah, not a question. I just wanted to commend you on seeking help and that now you know that that's out there and that you've continued to avail yourself of that help. And I'm just very, I think that's great, and I'm glad you're here with us.
Any other questions? Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mallory?
Good evening. Mallory Bascom with Licensing at the Pocatello Police Department. I denied Ms. Morgan's license renewal just on the language in the code alone. I've spoken with her employer, her mental health professionals that she's been working with. I've spoken with her on multiple occasions, and I'm confident that she's seeking the help and treatment that she needs. I would just ask that you consider accepting the letters that she has from her current health providers in lieu of the psychiatrist or psychologist from Idaho as outlined in the code.
Any questions?
Do you believe she poses any risk to the children that she tends to?
Based on the information that I've received from her counselor and from her employer and the conversations I've had with her, not at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President.
I have a question for our legal counsel. Should a motion, if it goes forward to approve this appeal, include the reasons and the specifics of why we're accepting and what we're doing here?
It's up to you. It doesn't necessarily need to. The appeal is your just opportunity to make that decision. If you put the basis of it in the motion, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine as well.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question to that. Is this license, if we were to appeal this denial, would the license be revoked again in a year's time and require Ms. Morgan to come before us again?
No, only if there was another incident that...
Sure, if it was unrelated.
Needed to be reviewed, but no, this, if this is overturned, then when she reviews, renews next year, there will be no issues.
Okay.
We have Brent and then Linda.
What does the language in the code say that you relied upon?
It says that if there's been a certain type of behavior, an individual has to provide a letter from an Idaho licensed psychologist or psychiatrist. And it doesn't allow for letters from any other types of mental health professionals, and it strictly, it limits them strictly to those in Idaho. So getting into someone in psychology or psychiatry right now is very difficult. Sometimes the wait is six months out to eight months out. We've had another similar situation where someone was trying to get in to see a psychologist and psychiatrist with an Idaho, and it took, they were looking at six months before they could get in. So the code currently just really limits and prevents people who are doing the right thing from moving forward with their employment.
Got it. Thank you. Councilwoman Lurick?
I would like to make a motion. I move that we overturn the denial of the childcare employee license renewal. Based on everything I've heard from you, I'm comfortable making that motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mingham. He got you.
See, he does it.
Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Super. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Come on up here really fast. I don't usually do this, but I'll let, I'll let that happen.
Sorry, I didn't say, I was just listening to my notes. And I just didn't want to walk away without saying it. So I just think that it is important, and she kind of said it, Mallory kind of said it, but I think it's important that like, like you reconsider and know that the language in that is a little ridiculous, especially considering my attempt and my problems. They were nonviolent. They affected nobody but myself, and obviously, I'm glad that it did not follow through, but it denied me a job that I love and that I've progressed in so nicely. And I'm not sure that something like that should immediately disqualify you from having your license. And I think that it's not being said that that is like not okay, I think. That makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I think I got to say that I think that language is perfectly appropriate, considering the circumstances and the fact that we're trying to protect children. We've made an exception in your case because of your behavior, but the language in the ordinance is pertinent to childcare providers. I don't want to debate this tonight, but I want to make that a point.
Okay, thank you. Agenda items seven, eight, and nine, council has been polled, so we'll move to agenda item 10, Personnel Policy Handbook Amendments. Council may wish to approve changes to the following sections of the Personnel Policy Handbook, changes were presented to the city council at the May 25, 2023 budget development meeting and July 13, 2023 work session meeting. A, adopt a new bereavement to leave policy, revamping the former policy and establishing a new leave bank allocated by request for benefit-eligible employees experiencing loss. Implementation date, August 18, 2023. B, adopt revision of bilingual incentive pay program for employees on the general, police management, and fire management pay scales. The revised policy would pay employees each pay period based on their proficiency level, testing and skill level as established by an outside vendor, implementation date first payroll of FY '24. C, adopt revision of the introductory period section to allow for fiscal year steps for employees in an introductory period, implementation date August 18, 2023. And D, adopt a retirement gift policy which formalizes current practice. Funding is available within salary savings of the position being vacated. Implementation date, August 18, 2023. Mr. Mayor. Yes. Brent, councilmember Nichols.
I move to approve agenda item number 10 as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mingham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mingham?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Flurk? Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, USDOT Protect Grant Application, Center Street Underpass Stormwater Resilience. Council may wish to approve the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation, USDOT, promoting resilient operation for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation project grant program. The grant would fund stormwater infrastructure at the Center Street Underpass to mitigate flood hazards event. The total project cost is $2,030,732.60 and requires a 20% match totaling $406,147. City council may wish to approve the grant application with the required match to be funded by the city if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Lurick.
I move that we approve the USDOT Protect Grant application as outlined in item number 11, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mingham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda item 12, ITD Local Strategic Initiatives Grant High Line Expansion. Council may wish to approve submission of a grant application for the Idaho Transportation Department Local Strategic Initiatives Grant. This grant application would provide necessary funding for the expansion of High Line Road from Flandre Drive to Pocatello Creek Road. Project costs are $12.33 million, and grant funding awards are limited to $10 million through the ITD. City council may wish to approve the grant application with the additional project cost in excess of the grant award to be funded by the city. If the grant is awarded, council may wish to authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to ask a couple of questions on this one concerning the $2.3 million that would be in excess. So if we approve this, will we later then determine where these excess funds will come from, or what is our, our next steps?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Christine Howe, Grants Manager for the city. In terms of the $2.33 in excess of the award, if we do get the full $10 million, we have approximately $1 million in reserves that we can utilize out of the Streets Department. The other $1.3 million would need to be determined from city reserves or other available funding that the city has. We could look at value engineering and any cost savings through changes to the project scope. So if ITD were to award us less than $10 million, we could reduce scope, but if we commit to the $12.33, then we'd be looking at trying to find that additional $1.3 million.
So a follow-up. In our work session, we talked about this grant application and it's time-sensitive, correct?
That's correct. This application is due on September 1, and they're looking for essentially shovel-ready projects, so they'd like them to begin, you know, within six months of award, and the award is anticipated for October. And part of that is because these are supposed to be directly impacted by state highway projects that are ongoing and respond to that, which is also why this High Line expansion rose to our top priority for the application.
Wonderful. Well, in that case, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 12 as specified, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, but before we vote on that, it'd be more better if we got Becky's name and kind of what you're doing there.
Becky Rousen, Public Works Project Manager. I'm helping with the design and the submission of the grant.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, you mentioned that we could possibly change the scope of the project. Is the scope of the project included in the application and is the grant dependent on the scope of the project? If we alter that, do we in fact endanger the grant amount?
Yes, so we spoke with the state to ask this very question. So if the project was awarded only, say, $5 million and we asked for 10, then there would be room to adjust the scope of work because it would be such a substantial decrease. If we apply for the $12.33 million with the intent of getting the 10 and are awarded the full 10, then it's unlikely we'll be able to adjust the scope in a way that would dramatically alter the application as submitted.
Okay, super. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Then we have a motion by Mingham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Flurk?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know. Showed up. Okay, we'll move to agenda item 13, Jim State Grant Idaho Humanities Council. Council may wish to approve submission of a grant application to the Jim State Grant Application to the Idaho Humanities Council in the amount of $10,000. If awarded, council may wish to authorize the acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. This grant would be used to prepare a plan, prepare and plan a documentary on the Triangle Historic Neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve submission of the Jim State Grant to the Idaho Humanities Council, and if awarded, as outlined in agenda item number 13, and if awarded, to authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. He was on the roll. He was ready for that second.
And, Mr. Mayor? Before we vote, I just want to comment on this grant. I'm really excited to see this happen. I hope we get this grant. I think this is a great project, and I think preserving that history, both the difficult aspects of it and the positive aspects of it are, it's really important. So I commend our staff on pursuing this project.
Perfect, thank you. So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Mansfield?
Yes.
Yes.
What's going on?
Nichols?
Oh, yes.
Scotty giggling over there. Agenda item 14, Declaration of Surplus Property. Council may wish to declare the following vehicles as surplus property and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the sale and disposal in accordance with city policy and subject to legal department review. A, Parks and Recreation Department 2003 Chevrolet Tahoe. B, Police Department 2012 Toyota Camry, estimated trade-in value $10,000. C, Pocatello Police Department 2013 Toyota Camry, estimated trade-in value $10,000. The, let's see, the declarations would add, would aid in the city's rightsizing efforts for all vehicles. Don't know what happened there. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number 14, the Declaration of Surplus Property, as outlined, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the sale and disposal in accordance with city policy and subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mingham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda item 15, Piggyback Bid, MPP Gov Contract for Splash Pad Equipment. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve the piggyback contract of MPP Gov's co-op contract via Vortex International for the procurement of the splash pad equipment for the OK Ward Park Splash Pad Project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. This purchase is a portion of the total anticipated project funded by the Idaho Central Credit Union donation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve agenda item 15 as specified and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Mingham and a second by Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move on this, could I ask a question of our Parks and Recreation Director?
Absolutely, Ann.
Where, when do you anticipate arrival of this equipment?
Ann Butler, Parks and Rec Director. They told us if we ordered in here in the next few weeks, it was probably about 12 weeks out. We currently have the bid out. It should be back August or September 7th for installation of the products. We figured we'd get it out, and if we needed to pull it, if we had issue tonight, we'd pull the bid, so.
Okay. So when, when do you think this pad will be ready to go?
We are hopeful that we will have a contract lined out September 7th. I'm hoping for next spring, but it'll depend on whoever bids on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just real quick, are, are there any issues with availability of these?
She told me if we started our order now, we wouldn't have any problems, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Super, thank you. So we have a motion by Mingham and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Flurk?
Mansfield?
Yes. Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Piggyback City of Boise Bid Contract for Work Truck Purchase Water Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a piggyback contract for the City of Boise's co-op contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the purchase of two half-ton Chevrolet Silverado work trucks, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Purchase costs have been budgeted for the, in the water department's FY '23 budget per rate study.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a quick clarification. We were talking about the two agenda items simultaneously. Was this the one, did, did we purchase, are we reducing one of these purchases down to one vehicle because of the one procured in Rexburg? Or was that, is the number two because we found the one in Rexburg?
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. Agenda item 16 is for the water department trucks.
Okay.
They are in need of two.
Okay.
Agenda item number 17, utility billing was in need of two trucks. We found one fairly local on the lot that we were able to purchase, and so we'll only need to approve one for agenda item 17.
Okay, we talked about both at the same time, so I just want to make sure we had it clear. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
While Tom's here, any idea on delivery time, or we still get the same old song and dance from the dealers?
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, it's, no. There's really no, no light at the end of this tunnel, unfortunately.
They're singing that song, and they're getting used to singing it, it sounds like.
That's an acronym, S.O.S.D.
Yeah, that's right.
We hope one day it'll get more better, but we don't know.
We don't know. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to accept the recommendations of staff and approve the piggyback contract of the City of Boise's co-op contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for two work trucks, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Chita. He got you. You gotta speed it up a little bit.
I know, I know.
Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nicholas?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 17, Piggyback of City of Boise Bid Contract for Work Truck Purchase Utility Billing Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve the piggyback contract of the City of Boise co-op contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the purchase of one half-ton Chevrolet Silverado work truck, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Purchase costs have been budgeted in the utility billing department FY23 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 17 as specified, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents and subject to legal department review for the purchase of one half-ton Chevy Silverado work truck.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nicholas?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 18, Purchase of Police Vehicles, Police Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the quote for the purchase of two Ford F-150 Super Crew XLT trucks to Bankor Incorporated and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Purchase costs have been budgeted for in the police department's FY23 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 18 for the purchase of two Ford F-150 Super Crew XLT trucks, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Marsha. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nicholas?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 19, Bid Acceptance Contract Marshall Public Library Elevator Modernization Project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Marshall Public Library Elevator Modernization Project. A, accept the only responsive bid received from TK Elevator for the total bid amount of $103,769.81, and if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement between the City of Pocatello and TK Elevator in the amount of $103,769.81 for the Marshall Public Library Elevator Modernization Project subject to legal department review. Funding for the project has been previously approved by council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Who?
Well, I saw your hand and heard you, so go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the bid acceptance and contract for the Marshall Public Library Elevator Modernization Project as outlined in Agenda Number 19, and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement subject to legal department review.
I have some questions before I would second anything.
I had a question as well.
Motion die.
Okay, well, the motion will die for lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Then, yes, we've got some questions.
Although I don't like the language in that contract either, I would second that motion.
It's dead now. It's died now. So that's discuss what we need to discuss, and we could entertain another new motion.
Got it. Thank you.
So, Brent.
I have a question for Eric.
Eric?
I never know why you have to wait for a answer.
Eric, City's Library Director.
Hi, Eric. So I understand we had three interested vendors, but only one responded. Do you know what happened to the other two?
We had five requests that came in. I think three responded, two of the three responded saying that they were not going to bid for the project, and one said that they would, and that was the price.
Yeah. Any idea what the problem was, and I'm not?
I'm not sure.
Responding?
I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm going to vote against this. I know the library needs an elevator, but this is the most one-sided, open-ended contract I have ever seen. Page three of this contract says that the price that they have submitted is subject to escalation with no limits even after we accept the contract. And I do not think that is a fair, reasonable contract. They went 50% down, 25% when the materials are delivered, and 25% whenever they decide they want it. And that's written in the contract. And I don't think that's a good contract for the city, for the library, or for the citizens of this city.
Okay. We had a, Tom?
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. We assisted with the library in preparing big documents for this. There was three bids that were submitted. Only one came in. This was the document that we received from them. If it's a point of contention, we could potentially go and renegotiate with this company. Unfortunately, we're kind of at the bursey right now. We tried to get as many bidders as we could, and we, no one responded but the one. But if that's what the council would desire, we could potentially reach out and try and renegotiate with them to get a better contract.
Mr. Mayor?
We got Josh and then Cory. Cory, Josh, and then Linda. Okay.
Oh, I think you were first.
Go ahead.
My question was exactly what you just said about going back to this company and asking, can we renegotiate that, that specific point? Because like President Chita had stated, I don't like the idea of you just boosting the price. It does say based upon their suppliers, but who's to say that, you know, they just throw in a little extra? So I would agree that if we could go back to see about renegotiating that, that would be adequate.
So one of the, if I may, one of the, one of the problems we're running in with some of the bidding processes, the markets are so volatile right now, especially with computer chips. That's one of the big drivers on this, is the brains of this elevator. People are real nervous about giving you a hard number anymore. And some of these, they'll give you a quote for 15 days is all. And unfortunately, that's kind of where we're looking at in the world. But we could definitely go back to the table and try and do something better.
Okay, Josh?
I'll say, my, I have less of an issue with the materials and the pass-along price. Because if we started any project, and whether it be stormwater, for example, in Center Street, if we start that project and our suppliers come back and say the materials needed for this pump have gone up by 15%, that's just what is what it is, right? Those kind of pass-through costs, I don't really have a problem with. The two that I, that raise my concern, the last clause in that, in that paragraph highlighted by President Chita was, any work described in this proposal is not completed by December 31 of 2023. So their work timeline now, if it's, if they don't complete that work, then they can increase charges necessary for labor. That's, that's my first hesitation. And my second hesitation is actually in page five, in the terms of the warranty. It says, any work that's, if it's delayed more than six, for a period greater than six months, then it is to start reducing the life of the warranty on that equipment, which means effectively if they take a year longer to put it in than they expect because of a delay in materials, that happens. But, but if that happens, our warranty is now null and void. Those would be the two points that, the pass-through of supplies, I understand, is something they have to do, and they don't want to, you know, take the costs, and they don't want to lose money on this project, especially due to materials. But, but those are the two, in terms of delay of workmanship, that I think are more in their control and give me hesitation.
And, and we agree. This is definitely not the kind of contract we would love. But at some point, if the negotiations do fail, we may have a, have to come back with the same thing. But we'll do our best, unfortunately.
Linda?
So I had a couple of things to say. One is, I agree with the first part of what Councilmember Mansfield, sorry, I was going to say Mangum, said about materials. I mean, that's pretty standard. As costs change, you know, then we pay what the prices are at that time. So I'm not that concerned about that. You've raised a couple of other concerns that if the company is willing to negotiate these things, then I'm okay with that. The part that made me not so concerned about this contract is that it has gone through our legal department review process, and there weren't concerns flagged. So that part makes me feel more comfortable with it. But the other, I guess, the question that I have, on the one hand, I don't really have an issue trying to negotiate better terms, except what is that going to do to the timing of this project? This is critical, and they've been without it for a long time, and it affects the employee's ability to serve the public, but it also affects the public's ability to use the facility. And there's, you know, we had our library board meeting earlier this week, and one of the things that's coming up this month is a major reorganization and moving of sections of books. And it, they're limited on, on what they can do. They're going to do as much as they can, but without a, without an elevator, it becomes very limited. So it's just hampering the ability to function at the best level. So if it's going to affect the timing, I'm concerned about that. It's already six months out.
Four to six months.
Once, four to six months, once we approve it. So if we go back and renegotiate, how much time do you think we'll lose?
That happens very quickly.
Can we do it fast?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's just, we're going to probably start making you guys' more life difficult with these contracts coming forward. People are finding new ways to find, to make the will even more round.
Jared?
If I may, on that note, this is a phenomenon we're seeing in contracts since COVID and since the supply chain issues. This is not unique to this elevator contract. We've seen clauses come about that I never thought I would see in contracts, and it's a take it or leave it situation. I'm not saying that's the case here. I don't, I don't know how the negotiations might go if we do decide to renegotiate. But this isn't really abnormal, especially the supply chain issues. The warranty's a little different, but maybe that's standard in the elevator industry. I really have no idea. But I just wanted the council to be aware of that, that this is not uncommon at this point.
And we'll, we'll do everything we can, but I don't know if it's going to budge, so.
So it looked like Brent and then Linda again.
Right. So if the vendors can change their prices unilaterally and at will, what's the purpose even putting them out for bid? I mean, low bid means nothing then, right?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have to abide by state bid laws, so we have to go through the process. But at a certain point, if it's the only game in town, it's the only game in town. The end of the day.
Linda?
I just had a follow-up after hearing what our attorney said, the sort of take it or leave it language concerns me a little bit. If we're going back to negotiate with them, are we risking them saying, like, this is the only bid we got. Are we risking them saying, oh, sorry, we're, we're not interested? If, if we're trying to push too hard with them. I mean, a negotiation is, they can always say, no, this is, this is our bottom line, and you can accept that or not. But I just wonder if you have any sense of, of a risk of them saying, fine, we don't even want this project.
Yeah, it's so corporate, individual-specific. I'd hate to even venture a guess. I'd probably give you a better build date on a car right now than I would on.
I don't, I don't think that, and I'm not hearing anybody on the council argue the price. I think what I'm hearing is their ability to escalate that price arbitrarily. You are going to find in just about everything anymore, prices can change because of, of supply. But prices shouldn't change because they don't show up for the job.
Right.
Type of a thing. And so if the council's desire is to have this renegotiated, or have them go and talk to them and kind of tighten some of those things up, it's a, it's a good idea, I'm sure. And, and I'm sure that they can do that.
Mr. Mayor?
I move from there. Cory?
I agree with Councilman Mansfield with the, the warranty aspect. I'd like to hear something about what the ideal longevity of these parts is, looking at that. Because if, if the, if ideally the parts were going to last like 25 years, then this warranty's kind of like, yeah, whatever. But if it's, there's a chance it's done within two years, then we really got to look at this warranty. So.
We'll dive into that as well.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion?
I don't, do we need a motion, or? With no motion, this dies, and we can give direction to, I think they have direction right now to go renegotiate. If, if there's no motion and this dies, so they could bring it back.
Need to formalize it?
They can bring it back, you know, next month if they, if they do that. Do they need to be formalized, or?
I mean, a formal motion for direction is always nice, but if there's no motion made, then, then the, the bid is not accepted and the agreement's not signed. I will point out, council, and I promise I'm not pushing one way or the other, but I'm to answer some questions. This letter was sent on June 21 of 2023, and the proposal is a 30-day proposal. So if we do go back and not accept this as written, they have every right to change the terms, any direction they wanted to.
Aren't we already outside that window?
We are, but they haven't changed it yet. And so if we execute, we're, we're locking in what this is. Now, locking in maybe is not the right term because that's the concern.
Sure.
But there, and then there is the fact that they have to, under certain circumstances, they can't just arbitrarily raise prices on anything. They have to be able to justify that, and that's something that we could engage in mediation or even litigation if we had to, if something became outlandish.
We see this on buying vehicles, too. They're wanting us to make a commitment to buy it before we know what the price is. So unfortunately, this is kind of the new, the new way.
I've heard that they were doing that, not, not just for municipalities, that I've had people say they want me to write a check for X amount of dollars, and that may change by the time the truck gets here, so, or the vehicle gets here, so. So, council, a motion would be fine. No motion, I can send the staff back to see if we can renegotiate and, and get some of these things locked up a little bit tighter. Councilwoman Lyric?
I'll make a new motion. And I'm not sure exactly what I want to say, but for, I move to approve, or move to direct staff to go back and read, and attempt to renegotiate this contract for the concerns that were raised tonight, and, and see what you can do. And I would also ask that, I'm not going to put a timeline on it, but that as quickly as possible so that we can move forward.
Second.
We have a motion then by Lyric and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nicholas?
Yes.
Thank you. So let's work on that and see if we can't turn that around very quickly. Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 20, WPC Operations Building Project Contract the WPC Operations Building Project, a construction solutions company in the amount of $3,363,990. And B, approve Amendment 5 to the WPCF Package Number One Improvements Professional Services Agreement with Keller Associates in the amount of $246,010, and authorize mayor's signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lyric?
I move that we approve the WPC Operations Building Project Contract and Professional Services Agreement Amendment as outlined in Agenda Item Number 20, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Cheetham. He beat you.
He's getting good.
He's good. He's good. You gotta be quick on your feet with him. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Angum?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 20, Airport Revenue Guarantee Agreement Airport. Council may wish to approve a minimum revenue guarantee with Delta Airlines of up to $500,000 for the period of September 5, 2023, through March 5, 2024, for twice daily service between Pocatello and Salt Lake City, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I remember a little over a year ago when we first met on this issue, and it was a nearly all-consuming issue of the city in terms of the dire need of this air service and the work that we had to do to keep it. And I want to commend our airport staff for the work that they have done in order to both keep these flights and improve and increase the number of flights that we have out of Pocatello. It was something that I was getting calls from, from people across the country who saw the plight of Pocatello and other cities like it. And so I'm just very proud of our airport and the work that they've done. And with that, I'd like to move for approval of the airport revenue guarantee, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield, and Corey beat you that time.
I know.
And a second by Mangum.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I'd like to hear from airport staff.
Alan Evans, airport manager, Pocatello Regional Airport.
As Josh had said, I agree with everything that he had stated. But looking at the agreement we have with SkyWest, we kinda talked about that in the clarification meeting. I'd like for you to talk about that. Like, what does that do with that agreement we have with them?
So the agreement with SkyWest will be terminated, and a new agreement will be with Delta Airlines. What I think most people need to understand is SkyWest is still going to be flying that service for Delta Airlines. In my opinion, this is a win in a number of different directions. First of all, we have an airline, Delta, who has taken us on in a way that we have hoped to be the last 30 years that I've been at the airport as a passenger, or as a capacity purchase agreement, you know. The at-risk portion of it is gone. We just need to perform now, to be really honest with you. So I think that's really good. The other thing that's really a positive that I see with this is we're back to the number of seats that are leaving our community and coming into our community that we had in 2019, because they're putting a bigger airplane in with a first-class and a Comfort Plus, and just a more comfortable aircraft to fly in. So I think that's very, very positive, as well as, as you mentioned, the council has invested in this service, in keeping this service. To be honest with you, had we lost this service with SkyWest, had they suspended it or taken it away, I don't think we'd be having this discussion right now. Because, as was said, many, many airports across this country, as a matter of fact, I think there's 63 that have had their services cut in excess of 70%, as far as commercial flights in and out of the airport. And I think there's 23 that have lost it totally, if my numbers are correct. We very easily could have been one of those, quite honestly. But I think it was the foresight and the willingness to hold on. SkyWest has been a fantastic partner for 40 years. Nothing against SkyWest in any way with what has happened here, but I think it's a time that we can move forward. And I hope that answers your question a little bit.
I commend you for the work that you're doing out there, but I wanted the public to be able to hear exactly those sentiments that you just gave, because it is a pretty hot topic in our community and across the country. And so I think that it's important that people understand exactly what's going on and what we're doing to benefit our air service. So thank you.
There are many airports that have multiple millions of dollars trying to get service back in. So the investment we have made, I think, has been very, very wise. And all I will say to the community and the region is, please use us. It can't get better if we're not using it. So, and I know that's been said from this council on many occasions, so.
Just a minute. Brent, and then Linda, and then Rick.
So what has to happen for this minimum agreement to go away?
So this minimum agreement is for six months. When we talked with the Delta leadership, they really wanted to get this service back to where it was in 2019 really quickly, as fast as they can. They know it's gonna take some time, and that's what this revenue guarantee is there to help sustain that and get it going. We just need to fill those aircraft, or, you know, at least run 80% load factors. I think they'll be happy with that. That will cover costs at least, and they'll be able to continue to do what they need to do. They see a large demand for growth in their Salt Lake City hub, which is their smallest hub, quite honestly, and they know that they need to grow that. And so we're just a piece of that. So hopefully that answered that.
Great, thank you.
Linda?
I also want to, you know, reiterate what has been said, and just commend you for all the work that you have done to keep our air service. It's so important, and, you know, there was a very difficult time there, but you kept it running through that, and we've come back from the brink, and I think we're moving in the right direction. But I also feel like in your synopsis of how this is beneficial, you kind of went very quickly past one of the things that I think is the most important thing for people to understand, is that change in status. You mentioned we're no longer at risk. Can you explain a little bit more about what that means?
So yes, the at-risk, basically, SkyWest is flying our route, as well as about 12 others in the country, at what they call at-risk. That's where they take all of the risk. If times are good and they make money, they take all of the money. If it's a loss, like it has been, they take those losses, and that's why they've been, you know, working with us to try to minimize those. The capacity purchase is basically where Delta comes in and says, SkyWest, we will pay you this amount to fly that route. That's a good thing for SkyWest, too. They know what they're getting. They know their costs are covered. There isn't a lot of risk on that. The other thing, it's just a little bit of a step up, I guess, if you will, maybe a little more secure in that, you know, that Delta is in partnership with them a little deeper, I guess, than they have been on the others. They still set the routes and the fares. Delta's always done that, but they're a little bit more of a stronger commitment and partnership, I believe. And, you know, like I say, for 30 years, this is where we felt we would like to be, but it just never has developed to be able to do that. So.
Thank you. To me, that part was huge.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Two points, Mr. Mayor. From the initial information we received, the quote was 12,500 per each one-way scheduled flight, but that has been altered to 6250, half of what was originally quoted. And I think the public needs to be aware of that. It's cut the potential risk that we're taking with this $500,000 guarantee in half. And if my math is right, that gives us 200 days of flight for our $500,000. And that's a lot better value than what we had before. The second thing is I want to emphasize what Alan was saying. Well, let me say first, one of my favorite things about serving in this council is being on the airport liaison. I've been flying, my dad was a pilot, and he always owned airplanes. And I've been on airplanes since I was three years old, and I love aircraft, but we've got to get on the airplane. We've got to fly. Business and recreation travel has got to get on those aircraft and fly. We're gonna lose this service. And if we lose it, it's a major problem for the city of Pocatello and our development down the road, economic development. We've got to use it. And this is an appeal to the community to get on the airplane.
And I might just add to that. I had a conversation with our station manager earlier today, and people are seeing the fares and actually are very happy with what they are seeing. We have some people that are coming from further out than Pocatello. They said, your rates are lower than what we're seeing elsewhere. That pays for my rental car. We're gonna start using you. So when people say there isn't good fares, that is not the case. I mean, it just, there's a lot of things that are variables there. But I believe Delta has listened to us. They know they've got to market this correctly. And if we'll use it, we'll be in a good place.
One more quick thing. To Rick's point about using the aircraft, you know, getting on the plane so that we keep this going. Back the first time when we were looking at a revenue guarantee, we had an in-depth discussion about not just these details of the cost of the flights and everything, but the big picture and the economic impact. And if I remember, it was $180 million for the economic impact to the region of this airport. So that's something I think we, I just want to repeat it because we have to think the big picture and the long term, and to your point about economic development, not having these flights will really, really hurt us. And that's a lot of money coming in and out of our region, and yeah.
And you're right there. It's 184 million. I just happen to have the flyer, but you're right on track. You're right there.
All right. Alan, thank you for everything you've done. This has been hard work and stuff. So before we vote, I wanted to address Brent. Delta doesn't like the idea of a revenue guarantee. In fact, as we spoke to Delta, that was one of the things that they said is, we don't like this. We need it so that we can help build this, but we don't like it, and we want to be off it as quickly as we possibly can. And so, quite frankly, I believe, I honestly believe, if people that were traveling out of Pocatello would do exactly what Council President Cheetham just begged for them to do, and get on the plane and use this airport and fly, next month, this guarantee would be gone. They don't like it. They don't want it.
That's why it's six months, and not stretched out to a year.
And so I honestly believe. And then I was gonna make a plea, but nobody can make a better plea than Council President Cheetham did. If you're traveling, please use the airport. Get on it. Use it. Don't let this opportunity that we have go to waste, because this is a huge opportunity for the city of Pocatello to have in a downturn where we have not regained the seats back that we had in 2019, to have one of the, what, four largest airlines in the country, in the world, come and say, we believe in you, Pocatello. We're willing to add a flight, add seats, add a flight, and fly there under contract. And so it's our own fault at this point if we lose air service. And, counsel, you're absolutely right. You lose air service, and it doesn't come back. We've talked to airports that are asked, they've got 10, 12, 15 million dollars, and they're being told no. And so we need the city to, we need people to get on those planes. So thank you.
It's easy. It's easy to use.
It is. It's the easiest.
Free parking.
Free parking. It is one of the easiest airports to go in and out of, and so, please, please, please do that.
We try to make it positive.
So with that, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 22, Fiscal Year 2024 Departmental Fee Resolution. Council may wish to adopt a resolution with Exhibits A through Y setting fees for fiscal year 2024, October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024. The exhibits are A through Y.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 22, Fiscal Year 2024 Departmental Fee Resolution, Exhibits A through Y.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
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 It's been one of those nights. We'll move to Agenda Item 23, and ordinances. We have a number of them, so just hang tight, please. Agenda Item 23A, An Ordnance Vacating and Abandoning the Public's Interest in Approximately .34 Acres of Rightofway Located at 1620 Sunset Road, and, let's see, and Distributing Said Vacated Land to the Adjunct Property Owner Evelyn M. Richmond. Said vacation was approved by City Council Decision Dated August 3, 2023, and all conditions therein have been met. Counsel, how do you wish the ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the ordinance, Agenda Item 23A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating the public's interest of approximately .34 acres of right-of-way located at 1620 Sunset Road, Vanette County, Idaho, more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A. Providing that the public right-of-way here and vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner Evelyn M. Richmond in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-311 and 50-1306A, as deemed to be in the best interests of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Angum?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 23B, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 5, Chapter 28.210, Basis for Denial, Suspension, and Revocation to Expand the Type of Licensing Required by Psychologists for Evaluation and Evaluating an Applicant with Mental Health Disorders. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to the ordinance, Agenda Item 23B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Mansfield.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on that, could we disclose to the public what we're doing here? I think a little explanation of why we're making this change is in order, and basically, it's because what we talked about earlier this evening in the childcare appeal, the kind of requirements we have simply aren't available on a timely basis in the state of Idaho. So this would allow people to go to someone who is licensed in the, what do they call it, compact? I'm trying to remember what the name of that.
I think that's right.
I think that was right, and still receive those kind of services that aren't available in our state physically. And I think it's an important thing in the life and times that we live, that this kind of an alteration be made to our ordinance.
Would 100% agree. Yes?
So with these changes that are gonna be made, so these changes will come before us again, and then will we vote on those? Or is this exactly?
This is what, we're voting on this, and that's the exact verbiage that you will have. There's, as I understand it, the code, there's more of a rewrite that will be coming in front of us, but this will address the one issue that we have had to deal with. It's just, there's too much of a time wait to get into anybody. And as Council President Cheetham said, it's just physically impossible to be able to beat the ordinance as it's written now.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, with that, Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Title 5, Chapter 28, Childcare of the Revised and Compiled Ordnances of the city of Pocatello, specifically amending Section amending section 5.28.210, basis for denial, suspension, or revocation to expand the type of licensing required by a psychologist for evaluating an applicant with mental health disorders, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
23C, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 13, Chapters 20.030, wastewater discharge permit application, 20.125 signatory and certification requirement, 20.135 wastewater discharge permit contents, and 20.180 periodic compliance report based on findings of an audit conducted by the Department of Environmental Quality.
Mr. Mayor?
How do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Sorry.
No, you're right.
I almost forget that part. I move the ordinance, agenda item 23C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Title 13, Chapter 20, pre-treatment regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, specifically amending sections 13.20.030, prohibited discharge standards, 13.20.120, wastewater discharge permit application contents, 13.20.125, signatory and certification requirements, 13.20.135, wastewater discharge permit contents, and 13.20.10.180, periodic compliance report, based on the findings of an audit conducted by the Department of Environmental Quality, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the reading, final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Mr. Mayor, before we take a vote, can we chat for a second?
Yeah.
Okay. I was disturbed when I first read that, when it said audit. Because if you just look at that, it looks like they found a problem with the way we're doing our water discharge. And I want to make it clear that that's not the reason for this. As we discussed in our clearing meeting before this meeting, this is simply bringing the language of our ordinance into compliance with the state ordinance, if I'm correct. We could ask Levi to comment on that, please.
Levi Adams, Superintendent of the VOTW, Department of Control. We go through multiple audits for the different parts of our process out there. Different auditors have different, slightly different interpretations of the rules and regulations, and many times they'll ask us to slightly change some of the language. It makes it stronger in their opinion on what things, so we like to comply with the auditors. So it's more like, it's a language change to help meet their interpretations of what the rules are. Thank you.
All right. Super, thank you, Levi. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum? Yes.
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 Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 23D, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 2.06.050, compensation of mayor and council members to update compensation and provide clarity to existing benefits for city council members. Oh, I forgot that part. Counsel, how would you like that? How would you wish this ordinance to be read? I blame Josh for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that the ordinance, agenda item 23D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marsha? No.
Nichols?
No.
What?
Yes. So with that, Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending section 2.06.050, compensation of mayor and council members of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, 1983, providing for an increase in the annual salary of the members of the city council effective January 1, 2024, providing that said salary shall increase by 2% each year for a period of four subsequent years, providing clarity to existing benefits for mayor and city council members, and providing that this ordinance shall be in effect, shall be effective for said officials commencing on January 1, 2024, after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we should discuss this a bit.
That's, we're okay with that discussion, yeah.
I don't like this ordinance because I don't like setting salaries for council for years that we don't have a budget for. And I think that's what we're doing. We're increasing council salaries in the future when we have no idea what expenses or revenue are going to be. That's the part of this I don't like. And for that reason, I'll vote against this ordinance, and I urge the rest of the council to do the same.
Okay. Anyone else want to make a comment before we vote on the ordinance?
Jared, if there was a case where, for example, we had a year where revenue was significantly lower, or expenses, some expenses came up higher, and is there a way, could an ordinance be passed modifying it to skip a year or to stop the automatic increases that are built in?
Yes, it just has to be done 75 days prior to a general city election, but you could do that as part of your budget build process in that year.
In that case, I think part of the reason, and I understand and am, I guess, appreciative of those concerns, but at the same time, it's also an ordinance that, as you've highlighted, has to be done on an election year, and there are limitations to when we are actually able to even do this. I think that there is the opportunity then to go in and cancel that and reduce it or make any changes necessary based on those future budget years. But this is a decision that has to be made on an election year. And so it's for that reason that I think it's necessary that we do so several years in advance.
Comments? Okay, hearing none. Then Wendy, would you, oh, wait. Yeah, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum? Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
No.
Nichols?
No.
What?
I believe that the city council is, compensation's been very undercompensated for the things that the city council does. We're asking people to make decisions that affect the entire community, and I think they need to be compensated right. I've never run from that. I've never been afraid of that. And so with that, I am a yes. With that, we'll move to agenda item 23E, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 2.06.050, compensation of mayor and council members to update compensation and provide clarity to existing benefits for mayor. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance, agenda item 23E, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending section 2.06.050, compensation of mayor and council members of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, 1983, providing for an increase in the annual salary of the mayor effective January 1, 2024, providing that said salary increase shall be, I'm sorry, providing that said salary shall increase by 2% each year for a period of four subsequent years, providing clarity to existing benefits for mayor and council members, city council members, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective for said official commencing on January 1, 2024, after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Before we vote, Council President?
You know, I just voted against raises for the council, but I'm in favor of this one. And the reason I am is anybody who's watched our existing mayor do his job in our community, the guy is an Energizer bunny. He is everywhere, all the time, and that's what it takes to help make our community successful. And if it takes a little bump in salary down the road, whether it's the existing mayor or a future mayor, that's the kind of talent we need to attract to that position. And I thoroughly feel that this is a well-deserved benefit increase that has been neglected the last four years.
Thank you. Linda?
I would agree with everything that Council President Cheatham said, but on both the previous ordinance and this one, I've made this same argument many times before. I think, you know, while I agree with that you are doing a phenomenal job and you are the Energizer bunny across town, this isn't about any of us that are up here now. This is about the seat and what it's worth, and about getting quality people to serve in office and compensating them for that. So it isn't about anybody up here now and what their needs are. It is always about what that job is worth and compensating people accordingly. So I agree with everything that Rick said about our current mayor, but I also think if we want to attract talent, as you put it, you know, good qualified candidates to serve in office, both council and mayor, there needs to be some, you know, reasonable compensation. So I am in favor of both.
Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 23F, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024 appropriations ordinance. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance, agenda item 23F, be read in full and placed on, let's see, wait a minute. I got to get on the right line. I screwed this up about four years ago. I don't want to do that again. Be read in full and placed on final passage for publication and the entire ordinance submitted for publication.
Second.
Did I get that close?
No. You said read in full.
You do have the right to have it read in full, or you can have it read by title and published in full.
That's what I meant.
Would you like to restate that, then?
I'm not sure I can.
I don't know if you can either. I don't know if I could repeat it. The motion is to be read by title and published.
In full.
In full.
And that's what I'm seconding.
That's what I thought I heard you say. So, thank you. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance's title only?
Thank you. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, appropriating $167,389,164 for the 2024 fiscal year to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city, providing for the objects and purposes for which such appropriations are made, and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose, levying ad valorem taxes in the amount of $33,164,282 for the fiscal year beginning the first day of October, 2023, and ending the 30th day of September, 2024, upon all of the taxable property within the city of Pocatello to provide revenue to pay current general liability, insurance, street, recreation, cemetery, airport, public library, capital improvements, expenses, and to pay interest and principal on general obligation bonds of the city of Pocatello, providing that the certified copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the county commissioners of Bannet County, Idaho, Power County, Idaho, and with the Secretary of State of the state of Idaho, providing for this ordinance to take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Before we adjourn this meeting.
We have a problem, Mayor. Sorry.
It's a good thing we didn't hurry up and adjourn.
I wasn't going to let you. So, council, I don't look at it often because it's not, doesn't usually come up, but to suspend the rules of reading the ordinance at three separate times, in full twice and once by title, that can only be done by one half plus one members of the council. Our vote on agenda item 23D to suspend the rules was three members for, three members against. So we actually need to go back and visit that and decide if we want to suspend the rules and have it voted on, or read it in full today, in full in one other meeting, and by title in a third meeting before it's voted on.
So Jared, the question then, on that first vote, needs, that's just about the reading of the ordinance. The second vote is on the ordinance itself.
That's correct.
So that's a good clarification, and I'm glad that you had caught that. When you have an ordinance, you have the option to read it in full three times or suspended. Right now, council, with the way the state statute reads, we would need to have it read in full tonight, and then in two other meetings, in which, if that's the desire of the council, we will call a special meeting, two more special meetings to have that read and then voted on. So I think there was some confusion when we voted on that, how it was going to be read, opposed to on the motion itself. If I'm wrong in my assumption, help me understand if that's the case.
Well, if we need to revisit this, I'd be open to making a motion on the reading of the ordinance again.
Is that the desire of the council?
Yes.
So I need to go back.
What I would suggest, Mayor, is if the council so desires to just revisit item 23D in its entirety, because the vote was premature.
Mr. Mayor, I move for reconsideration of item 23D on our agenda.
I have a motion by Cheatham.
Second.
And we have a second by Mansfield. With that, Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Okay. Thank you, counsel, and I'm glad that you caught that, Jared. With that, Counsel, 23D, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code, Title II, Chapter 2.06.050, compensation of mayor and council members to update compensation and provide clarity to existing benefits for city council members. How do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item 23D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
I would second that, but I thought we were saying we had to.
We have, we're revisiting this so that we do not have to read it in full at three different meetings.
Okay, then I will second that.
If this motion passes.
Right. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Rayham?
Yes.
Marsha?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Yes. So what does the statute say?
So we do have four council members that have voted to suspend the rule that requires three readings. So now we can read it by title and ask the council to vote yes or no on the ordinance itself.
Okay. So Jared, would you read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Section 2.06.050, compensation of mayor and council members of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, 1983, providing for an increase in the annual salary of the members of the city council effective January 1, 2024, providing that said salary shall increase by 2% each year for a period of four subsequent years, providing clarity to existing benefits for mayor and city council members,